Thank you all.
I'm gonna bring it.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Hey, good evening.
I'd like to welcome you all tonight. We have a celebrity in Congress. Get to that here in just a brief moment. We're gonna start with our invocation tonight from Chris Gill, our counselor from one.
Lord, as we gather here tonight to conduct the business of our city, God, first, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed on us and your hand of protection that you keep about us. And let us always remember to put you first in everything that we do. God, tonight I ask for a spirit of unity, to put aside any political and personal agendas and work together in harmony for this city. I ask that you grant us wisdom to make the correct decisions that may affect the future of this city. And Lord, tonight, with a heavy heart, I also ask that you bless and comfort our city manager and her family. And I ask that you strengthen them, comfort them, in a way that only you can do tonight and in the days to come as they navigate these troubled times that they're in. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Stay standing for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I now call to order this city council meeting June ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Our clerk will call our rule.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Here.
Council at large William Hannabas.
Here.
Representatives from Ward one, Diane Janey.
Here.
Robert, Roger Evans.
Here.
Terry Van Buskirk.
Here.
Ward two, Tim Buskus.
Here.
Jay Elder.
Here.
Chris Gill.
Here.
Thank you very much. You all have read your minutes in the packet. If we may have a motion to approve those?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as given.
I second.
A little motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. We, as far as reports, we have a treasury report. We don't have any correspondence and I don't believe we have any citizens comments. So if we may have a motion to accept the treasurer's report as is?
I move to accept the treasurer's report.
You have a second?
I second.
You have a motion and a second to accept the treasurer's report. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Well, we have somebody special with us tonight doing big things, I hear. I got to see some of it and I tell you what, that was, that was a wonderful, wonderful speech. Do you mind coming up for? Very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
I, I think this is just wonderful. I watched some of the speech. I haven't seen it all yet, but you spoke very well. This is a proclamation from our city of Oak Hill in recognition whereas it has been brought to the attention of the city of Oak Hill that Abigail Harland is a young lady who deserves widespread recognition for her astounding scholastic achievements and her momentous valedictorian speech. And whereas Abigail excels academically graduating valedictorian of the Oak Hill High School class of two thousand twenty-five, attaining an outstanding four point seven GPA, she received seven college acceptances and one waitlist for the eight applications that she submitted and was awarded the J. Edward Lewis Scholarship, a prestigious full ride scholarship to Washington and Lee University. And whereas Abigail has already begun her undergraduate degree completing numerous AP classes during high school journalism class in New York University and plans to attend Washington and Lee University in the fall focusing her pre-studies or sorry, focusing her studies on pre-law and journalism. Whereas in addition to her academic achievements, Abigail has diverse interests and personal goals. She plays violin and is a figure skater and an avid reader. Whereas Abigail's valedictorian speech was inspirational not only to her classmates, but to a whole generation of graduates all over the country. Abigail's speech now stands as the most watched graduation speech in West Virginia history, having been viewed on social media over half a million times, introducing her insight, intelligence, and enthusiasm to the world. Whereas Abigail has set forth on an ambitious path, we wish her the future, the drive to accomplish her goals, the ambition to nourish her success, and the ten, I'm sorry, tenacity to have no regrets, to never feel incapable and to unapologetically do good. I'm glad you're getting into journalism. I was behind the cameras. That's why I can't read this. Abigail is an intelligent and driven Appalachian, a proud West Virginian, and an asset to the city of Oak Hill. Now therefore, I, Charles Briscoe, mayor of the city of Oak Hill, West Virginia, on behalf of our governing body and the citizens hereby present this proclamation to Abigail Harland as a testimonial for exceeding the standards with hard work, dedication, vision, and drive and witness whereof I here unto set my hand and affixed my signature this ninth day of June, two thousand twenty-five in the city of Oak Hill, Fayette County, and the great state of West Virginia. Thank you.
So much. Thank you so much.
Abigail, would you like to say something?
Yes, please.
Oh, boy.
I just wanna sit right here.
So that everybody can hear you really.
I just wanted to say how grateful I am for this opportunity to speak here today and for the city's recognition. And of course, I am incredibly grateful for the opportunity that I've had to speak and resonate with so many people in my community and in Appalachia. And I hope to continue to make you all proud and to properly represent this place, which I love so much.
We also have a proclamation for Frank LaRitzy shutting down after decades of work. He said he wanted to fade into the oblivion quietly, so we, we're gonna mail it to. All right, we're gonna move along. Do we have any unfinished business? Yes, we do. We have our F twenty-five coal severance tax severance fund revision. Have a good evening, Ed.
It's pretty basic. We had expected to get about thirty-five thousand. We got two thousand, twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and some change. It left a difference of right about seven thousand. So all we did was have to let them know that we did not receive as much as we thought we were going to and just remove that seven thousand from the budget.
Okay. And our FY two-five general fund revision?
There were definitely some places that we were over a little bit, whether it was decreased use or, or budget just was not expended in, in the way that we had thought based on staffing or whatever. The difference ended up being about seventy thousand dollars. So we, we increased and decreased some revenues, which are listed at the top, and then distributed back at the bottom. You know, for instance, zoning. Had someone, we have a person starting Monday. So that'll maybe one pay period out of this fiscal year. So there was some money left, so we moved to that for the current fiscal year. There's some additional reports in that folder that show the exact breakdown of the city. They just go by the, the main codes. That was it. There was about seventy thousand. I had emailed all of this to Nina last week and she gave me recommendations. This is based on her recommendations for where to, to move and reallocate some of them from. That will be submitted and sent to the auditors, followed up with in July after we find out exact numbers on our carryover.
And I'll have any questions, Ms. Allen? Okay, moving along to number three. Consider approving planning commission recommendation concerning heavy equipment and storage containers.
I think I need a vote on books. So.
All right, we'll start with the coal severance fund revision. Then we have a vote to accept that?
And I do need to know who voted which way for the documentation that goes to the auditor's office.
I'll, I'll move to approve the coal severance fund revision.
A second.
You have a motion and a second to accept the severance fund revision. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And you have a motion for the general fund revision as well?
I'll move to, I'll motion to accept the general fund revision.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the general fund revision. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. All right, number three, consider approving planning commission recommendation concerning heavy equipment and storage containers. Do you have any information on that?
It's not, is there?
We may not have heard back from them.
So I could speak on that. Me and Tim was at the planning commission meeting. And I think it was said was for moving it to fourteen thousand five hundred, because that would cover, I think the concern was originally it was like at ten thousand. And then we had sent it back to them and they moved it to fourteen five, which would cover most, you know, any kind of vehicle that's a park in the yard that would have to do with anybody's, you know, job, panics vehicle, food truck, anything like that. So that would be covered under that moving forward.
Did they give the, as I wasn't at that meeting, I'm sick, but did they give exempt for the RVs and the school buses?
No, sir.
Yeah. I'm not gonna agree for this.
Exempt school buses.
No, sir.
I'm not gonna, but.
We could, could we make a motion and then change, we could obviously change what the planning commission said. Could we revise it exempting school buses and RVs?
Do you think we should table it until we have their wording before we decide what?
Yeah, I think we need to wait.
Change?
I make a notion that we table this because Bill and I are both, I mean, we've, we've thought a lot about that and we had talked to Steve, we actually had the exempt for the RVs. And I don't think that we had it for the school buses. And I, like I said, I wasn't at that meeting to cede with that. But I was told that they did raise it to fourteen one. And me personally, I think that needs to go to fifteen five. Personal opinion. And the reason why I say that is because there are people that has trucks, not just food trucks, that there are mechanics trucks and they are going away more than fourteen one. Fifteen five would just about cover any four fifty, three fifty, very possibly get to a five fifty.
Storage containers discussed.
Um, no, no, not at that meeting.
See, we're still at a loss because that was supposed to be approved for, the way it's supposed to be worded is it's supposed to be allowable in a B two and B three. It's not a B one. Well, there's a digit. So the wording hasn't been put in there for that either, then evidently. So I make a motion that we table that until we get the wording from the planning commission.
Maybe a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to table the planning commission's recommendation concerning heavy equipment and storage containers. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Number four and five are anticipated executive sessions. So you guys want to both move into the other room for a few moments?
I make a motion that we move into executive session.
Maybe a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? We are now in executive session. Thank you all. We're ready around regular session. All that in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. All right, before we move on to number five, we will, our new business will move on to it. It will be number six, our employee evaluation plan discussion. You guys want to table that?
I think we just, someone Terry had said to put it on the agenda for this time.
Well, I mean, it was brought up last time about the agenda, you know, about it. And I really feel that this will probably be if we're gonna implement this, this would be the proper time to do it where we've got one new and we're fixing to hire another new where we can kind of stay in the loop a little bit until we figure out how things are gonna go and then goes a little bit better, then we can back out of it. But this point in time, I think that's something that we actually need to impose.
You want to motion?
I'll make a motion that we impose it for, go ahead, Bill. I, I'm sorry, but you're talking about strictly employees? Just that the city council owns. We, I mean, own, not owns, that we employ, the ones that we are over. Charlie would not be involved, neither would Tim. Neither would, the only ones that'd be involved would be the chief, judge, city manager, and her. Those are the only ones we hire. I mean, we really have no authority over anybody else. I mean, that would not be legally even acceptable, I don't believe. But I do think that, I mean, like I said, I make a motion that we need to impose this at this point in time. And maybe later, at a later date, we may be able to back it back off.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second? For employment valuations. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. Number seven, the approval of a paving list and permission to bid the paving project.
Should be in our.
There we go, pal. Thank you.
Social state program in the area that there aims at streets, not need to eat sometimes in the intersection.
Can I ask a question about the paving? Now, this is your second half. Did we, Charlie would probably know more on this. Charlie, did we only pave the first part of Trump last year or year before last?
Trump, he did all of it, so from the street, it's up from fifty foot long.
Okay.
Still part of Trump.
Okay, so that didn't get paid for the initial one on Trump. Okay, that's, that's the only question I had.
Well, also I just need a date that we will stop accepting the atomized proposals. Have any idea on that? Streets involved are Anderson, Arthur Street, Beach Avenue, Burke Avenue, Burnside Street, East Martin Avenue, including widening Martin Avenue, Trump, as you just discussed, Webster, Needles Eye Park, parking lot, and the entrance.
We'll date for the pre-bid conference. Then we need a date that they will end accepting proposals. Next council meeting would be where guys would do consideration of the award to whoever you think.
Mr. Brad, can you pull up the GIS map that shows the past years of paving that?
So everything green has been paid since we've been tracking this. I think this is circa two thousand fifteen, sixteen, somewhere in that time frame. Actually, two thousand twelve was the first year. And so, two thousand twelve to now, everything green has been paid, which the bread, oatmeal, it's this year.
Hey, Charlie, can I ask you a question? Out there in Collins High, the old high school, I graduated. Out there in Collins High, the old high school, all right graduate? That, what is the name that's true? They're always asking, you've got the Bible and everything. That's all Sunday side drops. Yeah, yeah. When I call out there, they say it's us. Okay, I'll call back.
Thank you. No, I just want, I just want to look at it.
Actually, Dave, that was very helpful. Thank you, Bill. That was very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, you can go break it down by each year to see. You know, if you wanted to look at it, I just clicked on twenty sixteen, you see the total amount expended, the total number of streets for that year, then you can cycle through it in this dashboard.
To include costs.
Try to keep them all closer together too. Every time they load a piece of equipment up, newly, thought you found the dollar, all that, so trying to keep it close.
Keep it all in the same area?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that, all we need is the approval to move forward, we don't have to set any dates.
City manager will set the dates.
Set the date.
Yeah, so we just need the approval to go forward with advertising for the bids.
Well, I'm going to approve the paving list and move forward with advertising for bids for the paving project twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second to approve the paving list and permission to bid the paving project. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. All right, you guys want to move back into executive session now, or do you want to finish out? And we'll come back out on adjourned after we do the department reports and stuff. Is that the you guys?
Do you want to go ahead and do the department report?
Yeah, and then go into executive.
That way they can, yeah, be held here.
Okay, we do have Josh with us.
Two, two points I just wanted to update council on regarding a couple of the major projects that are happening. You know, the Needles Eye Trailhead Project, which has been ongoing, it has been delayed via a change order by New Ever Contracting, the contractor, for another sixty-one days with the, with the overall completion of August first. So it was supposed to be June first, it has been extended, so we're now looking at a sixty-one day extension. Subsequently, beyond that, we would approach our ribbon cutting or grand opening ceremony, you know, late summer, early, early fall, in which case I'll reach out to everybody and let that date is set. The second project is the LWCF project, and we got Tyler, he's gonna give us an update on the LWCF Playground City Park project.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I want to give a quick update on this. You may recall, this is a playground improvement project. You all authorized us to move forward with this under the land and water conservation programs back in September twenty twenty four was the last time that you authorized it, and we did a resolution. We've been moving through the process, the final design, working with the state program director in Charleston. So wanted to provide an update because there's been some kind of major activity. We did put it out to bid with the help of our engineering firm Thrasher. We have on the screen a certified bid tabulation. We received all the bids last Tuesday. We got five bids, and you can, well, I could zoom in a little bit so you could see a little better, but they're all tabulated right there on the screen. The low bid was eighty thousand dollars, the high bid was a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars and some change. And so, Thrasher went through, did the certified bid tabulation, went through everything with the fine tooth comb, verified that the low bid was a valid bid, had a conversation with them to double check that, and they're, everybody's comfortable with that, the contractor is, is confident in their bid price. And so, we are intending to move forward with that under the supervision and guidance of the program director with Land and Water Conservation Fund. They have to look at everything and approve it, which they have already done for this. So we are approved to award the bid and move forward. So this project has a sixty-day timeframe from bid award to substantial completion. So the bid award should be here within the next week or two. Then we'll, we'll go into pre-construction meetings and, and move on from there. So you should see some action down there if you're driving by, on the playground specifically, here within the next few weeks, three, three to four weeks probably before they get on site, I would imagine, somewhere in that timeframe. So it's moving forward, and through the competitive bidding process, we're getting very good value for, for the money that we're spending. And if you'll recall, that was a total estimated project cost of four hundred thousand. Council dedicated a two hundred thousand dollar match that was a fifty percent match that was required. And so that's the funding that we're working under right now. So it's been a little slower just with the process of, of moving to get to the point to where we are now, but almost some light at the end of the tunnel now with, with actually getting something done on the ground.
So you're looking at the eighty thousand dollars, correct?
Correct, that is the eighty thousand dollar Mid Kiff LLC was the low bid. Low bid, and it's a local company that I met a bridge, fairly local here in Southern West Virginia, so that's, you know, positive thing as well. So, any questions on that? I just wanted to make sure you were aware of those updates.
This Land and Water Conservation Fund grant was also, is the one that stipulated that there's an easement that goes along with that property that it will be a public park from now on.
Correct, yes, yes. And that, we have that same stipulation with the Collins Park from a previous Land and Water Conservation Fund project. I want to say it was in the nineteen eighties, somewhere in that timeframe. So this is not the first time, oh, and the, the.
Different organization, but this, but, but an easement on Needles Eye as well.
Well, Needles Eye, the Russell and Matthew Park at Harlem Heights also has land and water. And, and you'll notice if you've ever wondered why there's a National Park Service sign on the fence when you drive by that park, that's, that's what it is. That's because they provided funding. And that was prior to our ownership of that, when the county commission had that part of it.
Now, that has nothing to do with the playground equipment, this is just.
Correct, this, well, it does, there's going to be some new playground equipment, handicap accessible. There's going to be a new section within the playground that is going to have new handicap accessible equipment with a poured-in-place rubber surface on that.
I was asked that today, so I wanted you to say that so they.
The remainder of the playground equipment that's there was assessed to be in, in good operational condition. Still has a few years of life left before it needs to be replaced. However, everything will get a new facelift, so to speak. There's going to be excavation of the existing soil and fill material that's underneath that as the, as the surface, and engineered wood fiber mulch is going to come in and go throughout. So what's, as well as drainage, that's right, there's new drainage that's going in, sidewalks are going to be added all the way around the perimeter so that the entire playground will be encased within sidewalks. And brand-new engineered wood fiber mulch, which is also handicap accessible. And so, while the playground equipment that's there is not being replaced right now, it is going to have an entirely new look and, and much better functionality as far as the surface goes.
Did this, did this provide any shading? Remember, that was something that was talked about.
In the project also are two shade sales, one large shade sale that we've defined as kind of a food court with three picnic tables underneath of it, along with a small shade sale with two memorial benches.
And, and additionally, there's a handicap, two, two additional handicap parking spaces that are going to be installed right there adjacent to that. So, you know, it, it enhances the accessibility of the space. It, there already are some handicap spaces, there are ADA accessible sidewalks, but this is going to enhance all that specifically in that playground area, which is a main focus of the LWCF program. They really want their projects to enhance, improve, or provide currently non-existent ADA accessibility. Any questions?
I have one. I seen that y'all had a bid out for two bleachers. Have we heard anything about that? Because it has been brought to our attention. I mean, we got, you know, some big softball game, or baseball games going on here, Little League's, and one set of bleachers on each field is not going to cut it.
Sure, we, we have addressed it. City manager, Ms. Johnson, she allotted a remainder amount of money for park and rec. And so we have taken that allotted amount of money and purchased a large twenty-four-foot-long five-seat bench that has some elevation to it for one of the fields. So that is arriving on Wednesday. We'll pour a pad to set it on, a concrete pad to set it on.
So we're getting one bench?
We are getting, we're getting one bleachers, set of bleachers for the field in preparation for the Little League State tournaments.
How much does a set of bleachers cost?
About eight thousand dollars, or a large set like that.
Josh and I did, just to add to that, Josh and I did consult with the Little League about the bleacher situation before any of that was ordered. And so the focus, with, with the lot, with the available funds, the focus was going to be on the, the major league field, the one in the back, because they actually can't use the front field for the state tournament. So there's not going to be any tournament games played on the front field. Now, we'll have our normal season, we're hoping that in future we can continue to enhance that with, with other funding for next year. Put another set of bleachers there, but there is a set of bleachers there that's going to be relocated as well. So some of the existing ones are going to be moved to a better location. There's going to be the one new set Josh mentioned added to that field that is going to host the state tournament. So that was something we discussed with, with them at length and got their opinions as far as what is the, the biggest bang for our buck on that. There's also the option for donations for the bleachers. We actually reached out to CMC, by the way, the center, they had expressed some interest in providing some sort of funding as, as part of their community outreach, community benefit. I guess they have some funding that's a future here. Reached out to them, have not heard back from that, but that was certainly something that was in discussion. They may come through with that, and we may be able to go ahead and get another one if they decide that they would want to contribute that. So that was an option that we looked at as well. So we kind of looked at a lot of different things and pulled the Little League in and really, I think did a pretty thorough assessment of what that needs. We'll need some more, but for now, we'll, we'll handle the immediate needs.
Well, I'd seen where you'd had a bid or something come through on our emails or something, and I was thinking, well, man, I haven't heard no more about it, so I thought I'd ask. No better time than when you're standing there. Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Do you have a department heads have anything? Yes, may we have a motion to accept all of the department reports?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to accept all department reports. All those in favor? All opposed? Any council comments?
I have one for Charlie and his crew. It was noticed today, so they sent me a text. So summer teen, summer teenagers working for the city deserve a pay raise. They were working hard, weed eating, and blowing grass. It was just nice to see how hard they were working. I got that sent in a text today at four twenty-two, so I wanted to pass that along because they're listening. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd like to mention the Rail Trail Expo, and I was not able to attend it here, but I understand it was a, a pretty big crowd after the morning rain, and a lot of vendors, and the presentation was successful. And Crystal Hodges works very diligently on that event.
Anyone else?
Whoever did that, it was good.
I'd like to thank all those who came out to play bingo the other night for the Oakleaf fundraiser, we had a good time, stole a lot of food, and we're going to do another one probably in about three or four months. So we'll try to do one every quarter we can. All right, anyone else?
Mayor, I've got one thing.
Yes, sir.
I want to give the council an update in regard to our engine replacement that is ongoing with the, the county commission. We have created through Mr. File's cooperation with us, and Fayetteville and Oak Hill and Mount Hope are the departments that are qualified to receive this funding. And our attorneys have drafted a response MOU to the one the county commission originally sent out. That meeting is going to be Wednesday, starting at nine o'clock. Anybody that can attend, I would encourage you to be there because the county commission is going to give a determination in regard to the response, this MOU. Of course, I'll bring that, bring that back to Mr. File and the, the city council, but it'll, it's an ongoing discussion in regard to what you will be, be, feel satisfied, and we will be satisfied in creating an obligation for eight hundred thousand dollars or plus. So I just want to give you that update. Wednesday, the county commission will be rendering that, the determination back to the departments involved with it.
That's at ten o'clock?
Yes, yes. So I'll, I'll keep everybody advised in regard to what that, first thing we'll do, of course, is send it to Mr. File for his.
Sir, any future agenda items? Our announcements are as follows. Special session will be June tenth, seven PM. We will anticipate announcing the new city manager.
Yep.
That's June.
Oh, I'm not, sorry, it does, it does. It will be June. I'm sorry, tomorrow, so tomorrow night, seven o'clock, we'll announce the, June the third, yes, we'll, it's just made the announcement of our new city manager. Our regular council meeting for next month will be July fourteenth. We have a special session July twenty-ninth to do the year-end budget revision, and it will be closed July third and fourth for Independence Day. We may have a motion to resume executive session, please.
I'll make that motion if we get back into executive.
I'll second it.
Motion and second to resume our executive session. All those in favor? Opposed? We're now executive session. Thank you all for coming out.
I'll make a motion we come back out of executive.
I'll second it.
I'm gonna wait about ten minutes for this. Go ahead and do that. We have a motion in the second too. Adjourn our meeting and come out of executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.